Those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remotely, welcome to the new council. Congratulations to the new members and to the return of the other council members. So look forward to a productive term. At this time, we'll ask that Dr. Cartwright, if he would, please come to the podium. He'll provide tonight's invocation. Ask it all, please stand for that immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Giving honor to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I greet everyone in the spirit of our beloved. Please pray with me if you will. Our Father, which in heaven, thou be thy name. Oh Holy Father God, how rich is your word! How glorious, Father God, is your favor upon the heartfelt needs of your children that are assembled on this very day. We continue to pray, oh God, that your Spirit will abide so graciously upon the hearts and minds of our beloved mayor, council members, community, law enforcement, and all of those that you have charged to be humble and graceful as we endeavor to do your will. I pray, Father God, as the Spirit abides over these elected officers, that your word holds true, Lord Jesus, when you call upon us to do justice, show mercy, and walk humbly amongst man, woman, and child. May your Spirit abide with us, grant us the wisdom, the knowledge, the spiritual discernment, and understanding to be bold in our conviction, to honor you as we endeavor to do your will, meeting the needs of his beloved city of Fayetteville. Grant the heartbeat of justice that it may run down like warm water. Speak, Lord God, to your servants, abide with them as they endeavor to do your will, and touch their heart that they will see justice and mercy intersect at that corridor of grace. It's you, Lord Jesus, that we love, it's you, Lord God, that we need, and it's you, Heavenly Father God, that we serve. It's in the name of the Father, the Son, the Blessed Holy Spirit that I do pray and ask it all, and the children of God, please say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Dr. Cartwright, if you could, sir, I know we know you, your familiar face. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry?
Sure, sir. To the audience, I'm Dr. Lionel Cartwright. I'm one of the beloved students of Campbell University where I received my masters and my doctorate. I'm a turpin at heart for where I received my undergraduate from the University of Maryland up in Baltimore. I'm a veteran of 35 years of active federal service. I'm a good steward when I look in terms, think in terms of true faith, walking in the spirit of humanity and grace. My ministry is the power of Christian faith, where my charge of faith is to meet everyone where they are, camping about those of the least, being sensitive to the needs of those who are worthy, and then hold myself accountable to be a voice for those that does not have a voice. I love this city of Fayetteville. I have a rich history over 25, close to 30 years, being a resident of Fayetteville. I love Mayor Cohen, my councilwoman, Courtney Banks, the best councilperson in the land. I gotta say that, and my wife echoed that sentiment. But more importantly, I take pride in the fact of my relationship with our law enforcement community, fire department, and others. And for those of you who know me, call upon me if I can help you in any way, especially when you're going through seasons of grief and loss in your family, because my doctorates in pastoral care, crisis intervention, suicide intervention. And if I can be a voice to help you, I'm more than willing to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Thank you for your service and your continued service, sir. At this time, we will move to the announcement section and have Councilmember Davis.
I would like to, can the millennial, well, Fable Next Advisory Commission, will you please stand at the moment? These young people have been doing a great job in making sure that this city is inviting for us to stay and play in Fay. I just want to announce that they will be having an ugly Christmas sweater networking event at Segway Stadium on December 21st at 7:00 PM. Make sure that you go on the chamber's website, because tickets are available for purchase. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hare, you're a little bit early for the party. Councilmember Jensen, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm at the party with Councilmember Hare too tonight, and so is Councilmember Green. Well, hers isn't ugly, hers is pretty. So I would like to make an announcement about wreaths across America is going to be this weekend, and we have a lot of volunteers through our city that are taking donations and have gotten donations for the wreaths that are going to our fallen service members at the Sand Hills Veterans Cemetery. And also this year that I found out that they are going to be doing at the Lafayette Cemetery. So if you do have a veteran at the Lafayette Cemetery and did not know that they would be out there, please make sure that you thank them for taking care of our fallen veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not really an announcement, and we somewhat said it a little bit when we first started. Just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone that's in here tonight. And we pray as a council as a whole that everyone has a blessed family time, a blessed Christmas. We will not be meeting again until January, and I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to you and pray that God blesses you and that you have also a prosperous New Year on behalf of our council.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Mayor. All right, at this time, we have a couple very special recognitions to gentlemen that have worked and contributed a lot to the betterment of the city and its community. I'll start with Chief Hill, if you would. Can you meet me at the podium, sir?
Well, you know, if there was anything that we could give, this certainly is not representative of, in exchange for the service that Chief Hill has given to this community in a really a thankless role. Firefighters every day come in, put their lives on the line to protect us and to put themselves in harm's way. And Chief Hill has rendered that service to the city of Fayetteville for many, many years. And regretfully, we're going to see him go, but we're happy for you to move to the next chapter of your life. But on behalf of the City Council, the highest award that we can award you is the Key to the City, and it reads as follows, it says, "On behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, the employees and the citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Fire Chief Michael Hill in grateful recognition of his devoted interest, untiring commitment to the citizens of Fayetteville while serving the Fayetteville City Fire Department from August 11th, 1993 to January 1st, 2024." So thank you, sir. Well, thank you, this means a lot. It's been a privilege to serve the city of Fayetteville behind the patch of the fire department for the past three decades. It's a privilege that I've spent an entire career questioning if I was worthy of or not. You truly have a gem within your fire department. I'm proud of what they've accomplished, and I'm proud to be able to say I had a little bit of part in many of their successes. I thank the council for the support that you've given to me and to the department over the years and to the support that you're going to continue to give to the fire department. You could never truly appreciate what these men and women do for you every day. Take just a second, say thank you to the city manager for giving me an opportunity to lead my heroes. It's been an honor for a lifetime, and as I told you last week, I leave you in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Chief. And at this time, I would like to also ask Dr. Tony Coleman, if he would, meet me at the podium.
So, Dr. Coleman, you may not see as often as Chief Hill. Here's the man behind the scenes of keeping our city in a transit-growing metropolitan. He's been the director of our airport for a number of years, but he's worked and rendered his service to the city of Fayetteville through our airport division. He brought his expertise from prior careers, and he's rendered service to this community for over three decades. And I would like to present to you, Dr. Coleman, says, "On behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, city employees and citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Dr. Tony Coleman in grateful recognition of his devoted interest, untiring commitment to the citizens of Fayetteville while serving with the Fayetteville Airport from April 21st, 1993 to December 31st, 2023." Thank you, sir.
I didn't want to miss anything, so I have a few notes here. First of all, I want to say to God be the glory for the things he has done and continues to do in my life. He knew this journey would be filled with sunshine and rain, joy and sorrow, peace and pain. So he made sure that I had good Christian parents and siblings who loved their little brother, the comfort of a beautiful and faithful wife, Ms. Vansilia Coleman. You might not be able to know who she is, but she's right there in the red. Two beautiful daughters to give the greater purpose, and a pastor to remind me that love is not put in your heart to stay. Love is not love till you give it away. And then people to work with 40 hours a week that were dedicated to getting the job done and done right. All I ever needed to do was nudge the steering wheel, and people like Patricia Camel, Raymond Jordan, Andre Walton, Deonte Watson, and others, as well as the firefighters and police officers under my purview, would take it from there. Not only did I have great airport team members to work with, but the best airlines, TSA, FAA, and FBO tenant managers in the world. I was also blessed during my tenure as airport director to have what I feel has been overwhelming support from city council, city management, and the airport commission. Without your support, it would have been impossible to move forward with terminal renovations and other capital improvement projects in the middle of a global pandemic. So thank you for your support. Finally, to our listening audience, your patronage has been truly appreciated. You are the reason the Fayetteville Regional Airport is steadily moving towards pre-COVID ridership levels and high monthly aircraft load factors. Thank you. As a military retiree who served 25 years with six of those on active duty at Fort Bragg, now Fort Liberty, before joining the city team in 1993, I can truly say Fayetteville is a great place to live, work, and recreate. And if you don't remember anything else I've said, remember this: Praise God and fly Fay. Well, thank you again, Dr. Coleman, thank you, Chief Hill, thank you for the many, many years of service that you've rendered to this city, to this community. We indeed look forward, and we're glad for you to go to the next chapter of your life, but we will indeed miss you and your service. But thank you, and thank you to your families for allowing them to put up with us for that long. So thank you. So, council, moving forward, at this time, we will move to the city manager's report. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the recognition to our two retiring department directors. I can tell you that your recognition of their work and the work of other employees goes a long way to create the type of organization that allows us to serve the 200-plus thousand citizens. So again, thank you for honoring them in such a deserved way. As I say each meeting, if you have not signed up to receive the city manager's report on Friday, I would encourage you to do so. You can sign up for the manager's newsletter on the city of Fayetteville's website, fayettevillenc.gov. From there, we'll give you the latest happenings in the city of Fayetteville, upcoming events. And right now, this week, we have the light show over at Segway Stadium. And if you've not had an opportunity to view that, I would really encourage all citizens to do so. As we turn to the holiday season, I'd like to, council, would like to wish everyone happy holidays and hope you will also make plans to join us for our New Year's Eve celebration that we'll be having at Festival Park on New Year's Eve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, moving to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, and council, as we work tonight, I know we have a few who are getting acclimated to the services. We'll try to use our keypad and our sure system for recognition and for motions, but if need be, if there's difficulty with that, we'll go to hands for our voting. But we'll try with the sure system. So with that, I'll go to Councilmember, Council, City Attorney, you had something?
Just a reminder, Mayor Cohen, that we had a couple of members that wanted to pull some items before we moved to approve the agenda.
Typically, what I was going to do is get the agenda approved, they would add an additional item to consent, and then when I got to consent, I had those notes for 7.01 and 07, because they were consent items, correct?
Right, but if we approve the agenda as it is, then those items are already on there, but...
Well, I thought they just wanted an up or down vote.
As I say each meeting, if you have not signed up to receive the city manager's report on Friday, I would encourage you to do so. You can sign up for the manager's newsletter on the City of Fayetteville's website, FayettevilleNC.gov. From there, we'll give you the latest happenings in the city of Fayetteville, upcoming events. And right now, this week, we have the light show over at Segway Stadium. And if you've not had an opportunity to view that, I would really encourage all citizens to do so. As we turn to the holiday season, I'd like the council, would like to wish everyone happy holidays and hope you will also make plans to join us for our New Year's Eve celebration that we'll be having at Festival Park on New Year's Eve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, moving to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. And council, as we work tonight, I know we have a few who are getting acclimated to the services. We'll try to use our keypad and our sure system for recognition and for motions. But if need be, if there's difficulty with that, we'll go to hands for our voting. But we'll try with the sure system. So, with that, I'll go to councilmember, city attorney, you had something?
Just a reminder, Mayor Colvin, that we had a couple of members that wanted to pull some items before we moved to approve the agenda.
Typically, what I was going to do is get the agenda approved. They would add an additional item to consent. And then when I got to consent, I had those notes for 7.01 and 07. Because they were consent items, correct?
Right. But if we approve the agenda as it is, then those items are already on there. But...
Well, I thought they just wanted an up or down vote. So, the items that, yeah, I think 7.01 and 7.07, they just wanted a separate vote. Unless I'm mistaken. Councilmember Green, you wanted it off or you wanted a separate vote?
Separate vote.
Okay.
And the other item, too?
Well, the other item was going to be added, 7.08. Is that what you're saying?
Councilmember Hare's item?
Yeah, he wanted up or down.
Okay. My apologies.
Yep. No problem. All right. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda with the additional items, 7.08. Authorization for the city manager to sign a settlement and release with Gina Hawkins.
All right. The motion by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second about Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on said motion to approve the agenda with the modifications mentioned? All right. If not, I'll look to you for your votes on the agenda approval. We're missing one? All right. Madam Clerk, the motion carries eight to two. Supermajority was needed to add an additional item, which we achieved that. All right. And Madam Clerk, did you get the opposing votes?
No, sir. I can't read them from here.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So, Councilmember Hendros and Benevente. All right. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the consent. Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I thought we had taken care of that. I would like to have an up or down vote for 7.07, the downtown social district pilot review and next steps.
So, there's a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of 7.07. And also, Councilmember Green, you had an item?
Yes.
7.01.
On 7.01, I would like that a separate vote as well. Simply because I was not a council member at the time those minutes would have transpired.
All right. So, there's a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of those two items by Councilmember Hare. Councilmember Green, was that a second with those additions? Or was there a separate second? A second about Councilmember Green. Any discussion on a motion to approve consent with the exception of 7.01 and 7.07? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on that. All right. The motion carries eight to two. Those voting in opposed. Councilmember McNair and Benevente. All right. Item 7.01, Councilmember Green. There's a separate item that Councilmember Green had pulled. And Councilmember Green, I'll give you the floor to explain.
Okay. I just asked that they be pulled so we could vote separately on them because my intention is to not vote for them since I was not a council member at the time that those minutes occurred. And there's a month's worth of minutes there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion by Councilmember Green to have a separate vote for 7.01, which would be the approval of minutes from the dates of November 6 through November 27 of 2023, since she actually stated was not a member of council? Was there a second to the motion? Well, we need a motion. She wanted an up or down vote. So, we'll need a motion to approve those minutes?
Mayor Colvin? I move that we approve the minutes from the month's worth of minutes.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Benevente. Is there a second about Councilmember Hendros, discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the minutes. All right. Motion carries nine to one. Those voting opposed. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Green, thank you. Councilmember 7.07, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mayor. Once again, was just asking if there could be a motion put on the floor for item 7.07, the downtown social district pilot review and the next steps.
All right. So, 7.07, Councilmember Querby requested an up or down vote. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve that? Councilmember Benevente?
Yes, Mayor Colvin. I move that we approve the next steps for the downtown social district. I think it's been a successful program, and I think that we should go ahead and institute it in perpetuity.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by, was that Thompson? Oh, well, I'm going by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. All right. Discussion on the motion. All right. Seeing none, council, I'll look to you for action on this. All right. Motion carries nine to one. Those voting opposed. Councilmember Hare. All right. Item, moving along to, where are my notes? No. Jeffrey, you know if someone took my notes? Yeah.
It's just the, oh, I know what you're talking about.
This is a time that, the public forum, this is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals designed to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, ask that you please reserve those comments until the public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you please come to the podium. Ask that you clearly state your name and address for the record. Then, when you're notified, your time will begin, and at 30 seconds, you'll be notified that you have 30 seconds remaining to speak. And at the end of your expired time, your time will have expired. You'll be notified. And again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. We have 13 people signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Joshua Cox. Mr. Joshua Cox. Not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 6224 Golden Rain Drive. Good evening. I'd like to welcome this newest iteration of the Fayetteville City Council. Over the years, many of the faces on the dice have changed. I hope that the hearts have as well and that the council's collective aptitude for courage and moral leadership has increased for the better. Primum non nocere, it's an Latin phrase translated, "First do no harm." My first request to each representative is that in your efforts to govern the city, you first do no harm. Twice since 2020, a majority of the city council members have voted to criminalize unhoused people. Tragically, Josh, one member of our unhoused community, took his life this past year after being persecuted by the FPD and subsequently displaced. I urge you to decriminalize the experience of being unhoused and repeal the city of Fayetteville's cruel and nonsensical no camping ordinance. First do no harm. This year, the city council took another step backward when it proposed and nearly passed a youth criminalization ordinance. This would have endangered any Fayetteville resident who even looked under 18 by setting them up for unnecessary interactions with the FPD. Thankfully, this horrible idea was tabled, but we are counting on you to use better judgment in the coming years. First do no harm. In October, Lawrence Artist died in FPD custody. Initial reports showed involvement of the infamous Shot Spotter. Earlier this year, residents and advocates brought numerous studies forward that showed the potential for Shot Spotter to result in overpolicing and unnecessary loss of life as it has in other cities. Could the death of Lawrence Artist have been avoided if the city council had only listened? This past Thanksgiving, the FPD shot and killed DeMarcus Brody off of Merkerson Road. Like Jada Johnston, Justin Livsey, and Adrian Roberts before him, reports suggested Mr. Brody may have been experiencing a mental health crisis. In Cumberland County, there have been cries for mental health professional response to such crises, at least since 2018 shooting of Timothy Smith Jr. Could Mr. Brody's life have been saved if we had an Office of Community Safety that housed a program similar to Durham Hartz? What difference could a citizen review board have made in our broken municipal system? Noble recommended a CRB back in 2012. Please use your power, act now to hire the OCS Director and establish a recommended pillars of the program before another person dies at the hands of the FPD. I'm also standing here tonight in solidarity with those demanding a resolution, urging the immediate and permanent ceasefire to stop the genocide in Gaza. A non-binding resolution similar to the one adopted in Carrboro, North Carolina. A hope for an end to apartheid and freedom for Palestine. We're not all truly free until all of us are free. In the words Bishop Desmond Toodoo, "If you are neutral in times of oppression, you have chosen the side of the oppressor."
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
All of us or none of us.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Melville. Ms. Sharon Melville. Next speaker, Mr. Alba...
And that should be Sharon Melvin. Is Ms. Sharon Melvin here?
Oh, Melvin. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Mr. Alba Treadwell.
Greetings, Mayor and councilmen. I am Albia Treadwell, 1837 Broaddale Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I come to speak about the property located at 4903 Merkerson Road, ordered set up for demolition. Several things during the luncheon, the last meeting, I believe it was on the 27, had come about that I deem to be not true. One of them were being that one of the councilmen stated that the building had mold coming out of it. After going back to the back of the building, taking pictures, colored photos of the building, which I do have, it was not mold at all. It would just happen to be leafy, it had grown up on the building. That was one of the issues that I think, feel that it caused a prejudice against maybe a decision to have that order pulled at that time. Also, statements about the, one of the property negative things came up about the 411 calls. There was four of them. In two years, there was four of them. I don't understand why that was such an issue at the time, considering two of those calls were for the safety of someone else. And I can't expound on that because of my time. I have asked several times. I cannot deny that we have gotten violations. But each time, I believe that I was in compliance because nobody followed up with me. I was brought up also about the environmental court issues. Every time I went back to environmental court, each one of those had been dismissed. To my knowledge, when I went back, it was dismissed. You know, I look at it like this, and some of you may have children and may not have children. And I used to grow up, and when I was growing up, Mama would say, "Go clean your room." And I'd go clean my room, and she'd say, "Well, is it Joe's clean or is it my clean?" And there's a difference between what the city is expecting and what I thought would be feasible to be fixed and repaired. And I have asked on several occasions if there's anything that I've done that was not completed, to please come out and show me what needs to be done. In my closing remarks, Mayor, I do want to say thank you so much for taking that emergency, that emergency meeting that I asked for, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Benus Treadwell. And I think that Community Development Assistant Manager Olivera was there. So, there was some information I think you were going to get from him pertaining to the facade grant and programs or something, right? Okay. But thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Tammy Terrell Garcia. Tammy Terrell Garcia.
Good evening, Ms. Terrell Garcia.
Yes, my name is Tammy Terrell Garcia. I reside at 6421 White Hall Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. My apologies, this is my first time. Thank you all, Mayor Colvin, and fellow city council members for taking your time out to be with me today. My reason for being here today is concerning the Fayetteville Police Department.
Ms. Terrell Garcia, can you put the mic down in front of you just so we can? Yeah, there you go.
It's concerning the Fayetteville Police Department. I'm a resident at Cotton 8 subdivision at Fort Liberty, at the gate of Fort Liberty, which is Burnswick and White Hall Drive. On December 3, I arrived home from church with Mr. Garcia greeting me at the carport, telling me that someone had parked in my parking space all the way to the back of our house, stating that they had a gray Camry. Once, with dark tinted windows, once he found out that it was not me, after unlocking the door and looking out, they left our residence in a hurry. He assumed to go ahead on and go jogging. As he seen the presence of the police, he stated to them, well, he tried to, that the car that they were looking for was at our, had been at our residence. They chose to ignore my husband and shade him away, ignoring him. Though we have a no trespassing sign, it was not acknowledged. Later on that evening at 7:20, my husband was called to my daughter's home, which is in New Panarosa, towards Santa Fe. The call was concerning that she had a person, a man, laying on her porch, stretched out. The police was called an hour and a half. They told her that they were busy. I called them back after two hours. They told me that I was, that they were busy. My question is, if our wages are coming out for being taxpayers and being funded to the police department as citizens, what are the priority towards us as the taxpayers? Because we shall be heard. We shall be able to get the same service. We shall be treated with urgency. So, my question is, should we be the public, defend ourselves or our property? It says, "Do not defend the government. Defend the police. Do not fund the police." I'm not saying that. I'm just asking for justice. I lost my son back in 2020. I didn't get justice then. I try to keep the faith in the rules of the land of the law. I pray not to lose another child in Cumberland County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell Garcia. Chief, do you have someone that can follow up with her about those incidents? All right. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Carrie Jackson. Ms. Carrie Jackson. Mr. Joel Cook.
Good evening, Mr. Cook.
Good evening. My name is Joel Cook. I'm at 6816 Torrance Lane, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm a historian and an archaeologist with a background in military history and black history. Because of my profession, I often think about the world, not in years, but in centuries. And I understand the decisions that one lifetime, made in one lifetime, carry on into the next. In October of 1898, Fayetteville City Council allowed a rally to take place at the old fairgrounds which once stood on Southern Avenue. The headliner was Benjamin Tillman, a white supremacist politician, and his speech discussed the danger of allowing Negro rule to come to the South. One month later, many of the attendees of that rally boarded trains to Wilmington, where they would slaughter hundreds of black people in one of the most infamous race massacres in this country's history. I bring up that moment in time because I know that you feel it. And I know that 125 years later, the weight of what that council did still impacts us here today. And as with that legacy in mind, that I call on you to adopt a permanent ceasefire resolution for Palestine. Over 20,000 innocent Palestinians, including over 7,000 children, have been martyred by Israeli forces in the last two months. The atrocities committed with our federal government's support continue to grow worse by the day. As a city with a deep connection to the military, Fayetteville has the power and the responsibility to rally against this genocide in a way other cities simply cannot. I implore you, for Palestinians today and 125 years from now, to use that power to call for a permanent ceasefire and an end to the colonial occupation of Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Clarissa Rodriguez. Clarissa Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Sama Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening. My zip code is two eight three oh six. I'm here to speak about the ceasefire resolution. What is it to be a Palestinian American? To be a Palestinian American means to live under an occupation whenever you visit your homeland. Being Palestinian American means not knowing whether or not you will survive a trip to visit your aunt. This is due to the military occupation invoked by Israel. Being Palestinian American means funding this ongoing ethnic cleansing and genocide going on in Gaza, even though you are against it. As a Palestinian American, I am here to be the voice of the oppressed and call for a ceasefire. A ceasefire simply means to stop killing civilians and destroying Gaza's infrastructure. Norman Fickelstein said in a recent interview, every hospital in Gaza now has been disabled. Imagine your child is born prematurely, and the fuel to your child's incubator is cut off, causing your child to suffocate to death. Is that complicated? This is as complicated as everybody in my family, except my mother and my father, being thrown into gas chambers, end quote. Gaza is twenty-five miles long and five miles wide, among the most densely populated places on earth. Fifty percent children. Most of Gaza's civilians are descendants of refugees. Gior Island in two thousand and four called Gaza a large concentration camp. He is not just any Israeli, but one of the highest ranking security officials in Israel. In two thousand and six, the blockade on land, air, and sea began with Israel controlling all imports and exports. Israel denies chocolate to children at a certain point. Can you imagine not allowing chocolate? Not even allowing Gaza, the second largest exporter of flowers at the time, to continue world trade? They even calculated a starvation plus diet. Most people in Gaza never experienced a full stomach. Israel didn't allow many many people to go to better hospitals in Gaza, causing them to die. If you don't know about this, you don't know enough about what's going on to fall on any bills. Take one hour to listen to an interview, Norman Fickelstein. He's a Holocaust survivor who dedicates his life to this. When you look into Human Rights Watch and MC International, you will see years of brutal and horrific occupation. You just imagine your limbs being cut with no with no sedatives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Consider this final statement by Gideon Levi, a former Israeli soldier, author, and journalist, who said in his meeting titled The Israeli Lobby and National Press Club on October tenth, April tenth, two thousand and fifteen, Israel is the first ever occupier that presents itself as not only a victim, but the only victim around. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Erica Sharify. Ms. Erica Sharify. Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Excuse me, good evening. Lizette Rodriguez, seventeen oh one Cherokee Drive. Hello, council, and welcome to our newest council members, Lynn Green and Malik Davis. And I'm excited to see what new progress and possibilities these new fresh faces bring to our city. And I hope you guys have a wonderful first rest of your meeting. But today, I'm here to once again speak about accountability and transparency because another Fayetteville resident has been killed by a Fayetteville police officer on Thanksgiving of all days. And I want to know how many lives this council will continue to be taken and why the general public is why the general public is left in the dark without answers time and time again. So here's my running list of the FPD killings and inappropriate actions that I have witnessed this year and that I have heard about via the news. And before I start, I want to be clear that I'm not trying to paint the entire police department in a bad light. This is just a call for transparency, accountability, and independent police oversight of our department. Number one, we have Marcus Brody, who was already mentioned earlier, who was killed on Thanksgiving during a traffic stop. And we still don't have any details as to why he was stopped in the first place and why officers were trying to detain him in the first place just for a traffic stop. We have the mysterious death of Lawrence Artis, who somehow managed to fatally shoot himself while he was handcuffed behind his back. We had a police officer with a history of mental illness and alcoholism shot and killed his wife and himself. We had two police officers arrested and charged with crimes. We have multiple officers who were caught on camera harassing and taking food from an unhoused man. We have eyewitness reports that a certain police officer has been throwing away the belongings of those who are unhoused. And I understand the cases of Mr. Artis and Mr. Brody are under investigation by SBI, but here's where I have an issue. Shortly after Mr. Artis's death, CBS seventeen aired a segment in which reporter Justin Moore was telling the audience that Police Chief Brayden could not say anything more about the case because SBI was investigating. Yet in an email back to the reporter, SBI deferred his questions to Police Chief Brayden. So who is responsible for letting the public know what is going on in these cases? And according to Mr. Brody's family, he suffered from mental illness and could have been experiencing an episode. Does that sound familiar? In two thousand and twenty-two, Jada Johnson shot seventeen times from behind during a mental health crisis. Justin Livsay shot multiple times during a mental health crisis. As the council begins to think about their priorities in two thousand and twenty-four, I am urging you to quickly hire a Director of OCS and budget money for a mental health response team under that OCS because the Fayetteville Police Department receives four thousand mental health calls a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Mackenzie Smith. Mackenzie Smith.
Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Mackenzie Smith. I'm from Fayetteville, Iroquois two oh three oh three. I came to speak today on behalf of the ceasefire in Gaza. About a month ago, I'd tried contacting our state senate about a ceasefire and essentially was met with a strong, we stand with Israel. Now, personally, I don't agree with the use of my tax dollars being used to fund a genocide and ethnic cleansing. I'm very uncomfortable with it when we still when we still have things that we need to take care of over here. We need better healthcare, we need the homeless off the streets, we need like more attention in our police field. I don't think that the solution is war when it comes to differences between people. We there's nobody's being given the chance to advance in this war. There's all this is doing is breeding antisemitism and Islamophobia on both sides. So I urge you, please, to speak to our senators and urge a ceasefire now. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Sulaiman Kabia.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sulaiman Kabia. I'm a representative from the Muslim community of Fayetteville. And tonight, I have a few messages that I would like to convey. First and foremost, I would like to remind my community, the Muslim community, the Christian community, the Jewish community, and all the other communities here in Fayetteville of one thing. Firstly, I'd like to remind you all to constantly keep our Palestinian brothers and sisters in your prayers because no matter who ignores us and who ignores our voices, God is always listening, and he's always aware of what we're doing. Right now, we're seeing a genocide. We're seeing events that are the worst events that we've seen in a very long time in the world. And something else that I would like to remind everybody here to do is to continue using your social media to expose the truth of this issue and to show the world what the media has not been showing. Because we are now the voices of the Palestinian people who have been cut off from the rest of the world. One of the most alarming things about this issue right now is our moral inconsistency on the issue. This country and this community specifically have always been staunch staunch opponents of terrorism, as we should be. Because terrorism is wrong wherever it wherever it may happen. And so that's why it's been so alarming that when we see twenty thousand innocent Palestinian people, men, women, and children, eight thousand of them being children, four thousand of them being women, and ninety-five percent of those twenty thousand being innocent civilians being killed, that most of us would not most of us, but many of us would choose to stand in solidarity, not with those citizens, but with the IDF, who are actually dropping the bombs on those citizens. But I'm not here to argue the facts because most of us who are even paying attention to the issue right now, we know the reality of the situation. Today, I'm here to give a message to the council, and that message is that the Palestinian people have not despaired and they have not lost hope, and neither have we. We know that a day is coming when the truth will come to light and when justice will be served. And that justice will come with or without our current leadership. And so a question I would like to pose for you to ask yourselves, would you rather that justice come at the hands of your political opponents who are running against you in the next election or by our children who will lead the next generation? Or would you rather do what is right now so that we can come to a resolution? So I call you all to call for a ceasefire up the chain of command.
Thank you, sir.
Free Palestine.
Thanks, sir.
May we have a note for the speakers?
All right. Well, we thank you. Thank you to the speakers for participating in tonight's public forum. Would that council entertain a motion to adjourn? All right. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone.